Chicken bone.
Yeah.
Don't make a lot more.
Yeah, you did pretty good.
I ate both of them. I was going crazy about it. But he's funny. It was really good.
All right, it's six o'clock, time to start. I want to welcome everyone to the May 18, 2024 work session fishing for the Everly Town Board. We're glad everyone's here. We have some people here in the business talk over with us. And Hannah's here, thank you, Hannah, for coming. Anyone, let's see, everybody's here. So this has been recorded, so if anybody's at home watching this, we're glad you're here with us. There are agendas, if you would like to have one. The first item, consent agenda is all items listed below, can be considered written or have discussed at length in previous meetings, will be enacted by one motion. A separate discussion will be held except by one request by a member of the board commissioners. A, consider approval of utility easement purchase by North Carolina D O two for five oh three North Sand Hills Boulevard in an amount of six hundred and fifty dollars for minor replacements. B, consider approval of amended contract audit for this LLP. C, consider approval of advertising for public commissures required by North Carolina D O status as amended to system development fees.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as written.
Second, discussion from the board.
Yeah, there was corrections, is that?
We were able to get those corrected, yes.
All right, I'll second you. Okay. I was gonna second.
I just asked Paul if we didn't, if we didn't do the utility easement, would they cancel the whole?
Yes, answer is yes. Any others? All in favor?
Aye.
The opposed motion carries, thank you. Right, number two, consider board appointments, planning director John.
So five reappointments for planning board, these kind of went by the wayside due to changeover and the department being busy. But post one for Roger Bone, post number two for Brooke Palmerans, post number three for Adriana Jankor, post number seven for Barbara Allard. And then alternate post one, Daniel Beaky, that term that expired January first, twenty twenty four, we're requesting them to be reappointed. And then in addition to that, we have one citizen that requested appointment to the historic preservation commission, Alexis Taylor, that would be post number five. She did submit her application and her biography in the packet. If you have any questions on it, let me know. Other than that, we did sit down with her, we did interview her and thought she would get committed for the position. Any questions?
Any question?
I was gonna say, do we need to reappoint them per position? Do we appoint them as a collective group?
I think you could do the planning board.
Right.
Yeah, just say you approve all.
Yeah, okay, I make a motion, we approve all the re, um, the report, yeah, the reassignment.
Second. Any discussion with that? Did you have one? Any questions? We're glad to have people to do this. Yes, it is good to have people that volunteer. All in favor?
Aye.
You oppose, motion carries. All right, second now. Beavers.
Historic preservation, do you appoint them?
I make a motion that we appoint, then you appoint, appoint A, I'm just looking for their name, my computer's been giving me some issues. Excuse me, can you?
Alexis Taylor.
Alexis Taylor, I'm gonna motion that we appoint Alexis to the historic preservation commission committee.
Second.
Second.
Motion, this second discussion. Do you none, all in favor? Again, we're glad to have someone on that commission. Thank you. All right, I'll close, two, go to three, discussion fiscal year twenty four, twenty five draft budget.
So Mayor, you've got the same, yeah, draft budget, but this is actually, you know, my submission of, hey, this is the record budget that you've got from the town manager for the first draft that you got last week. So it's there. Really no, no major changes to what you've looked at for the last month, give or take. A few little balance items here and there. And good news is, on the things we're waiting for, I've mentioned again and again, we're waiting for a final workers' comp and a final property liability. The primary health insurance, that's kind of come through, we're expected a little bit of an increase, but we're actually happy to have that. So that's set now, we've looked at the numbers, good on that. The workers' comp, we're still waiting for a couple more, I think we're gonna get on Wednesday with a meeting from the, um, from one of our brokers who's bid this. So the renewal rate from the current one was a good bit higher than this year. So, and that's what's in the budget now, the expected increase, I think I plugged in about fifteen percent, does that sound right, Regina? For the increase. So with this new one, we're thinking it's gonna be, I don't know the percentage, but we think it's gonna be about thirty thousand and change, lower than what's plugged into the budget now. So I haven't made the changes yet, so there might be more changes to the budgets where I'm going with this, but they're good changes. So I think, we hope that comes through. And we're still waiting on property liability, I've already got an increase plugged in there with the budget. I kind of expect that to come through pretty much within a couple thousand where that's already programmed into the budget. So with, you've got my, you know, the first version of the version of the budget message, which, you know, usually I get that out, so you've got all the explanation, all the detail, all the stats in there. You've got that. And then with the things like I was talking about, the workers' comp, the property liability, if that comes in in the next few days, I will try to get that into the, the final version, that'll go into your notebooks for the budget hearing on, on May twenty eighth. For the Tuesday meeting on the Tuesday after Memorial Day. So again, there's really not a lot of new and different news on that. Certainly the wide open, if you have any discussions or you've thought about a few things that you want to talk about in there. I will say, say, just jumping ahead, that the next item, there's some change to the personnel policy. Those are all really kind of good, I think, items that will boost our, kind of our benefits and our offerings to our employees. It's already part of the budget, financially it was very affordable, but even with the, um, the changes, like the workers' comp is even more affordable, if that makes sense. And we'll go into more detail with that when we get to that item specifically. But those are already kind of factored in, but the policy, if you are like, oh, we just don't like, we can take them out, no problem, but it requires a separate bond, the actual personal, personal policy and those amendments, but we'll talk in more detail. So, you know, the capital, capital changes, we got everything in there, I mean, everybody's in pretty good shape. You know, these department heads, I think you guys spoil them rotten with all the capital stuff, they're well taken care of, and I feel good about it. I think the, um, the employee benefits that are in there are good, um, solid, I compare them to anyone's. So we feel, feel really good about, about the whole package this year. So again, a few little tweaks, but I think we're in really good shape. So again, if there's any questions you have to, we can talk about, most, most of the department heads are here, we can try and lay that out for you better. And, or if not, you think it's something between now and the, the actual approval, budget hearing process, we, we can, you know, discuss it then too. So there's really no, no action, just really just discussion, any questions? So we're set for the advertising, scheduled for the hearing in a couple of weeks.
Sounds good. Anybody? All right, let's close out three, and we'll go to number four, consider approval, resolution number twenty four dash eleven, amended to town of Everly for personnel policy, excuse me.
Let's see. It does not like it, I can't have my computer on, it's good. Yeah, let me see if I can just not come up.
Yeah, mine's not working.
Is yours not coming up?
No, I don't know, I think, I've had problems with it all day.
But I downloaded mine, I put mine on my desktop.
Yeah, I'm having problems putting it up.
Oh wait, I think I see it. Here it is. Okay, I got it. So, so these are the personnel policy changes. So these are recommended, um, changes to our personnel policy, so there's three. So really, they're pretty intuitive. So one is, it's in the memo, if you can bring that up and actually see it, the memo dated May eighth. So the first one is the increase in vacation accrual for new employees from forty hours per year to eighty hours per year. So really, um, our general accrual rate for employees is pretty good, it's pretty normal. You end up getting two weeks to three weeks, depending on the years of service, you have a graduate scale. But for new employees, just starting off, it was pretty low at only, at only forty hours, that's a week of vacation time. Now, you don't get it the first day you walk in, but your accrual rate was only for, you gotta earn after so many, you know, months, you earned the forty hours. And, you know, really, I think it's just been in there for a long time, honestly. And when it got to scale, we were in pretty good shape, but just for some reason, that entry level was just left at a really low level. So we looked at it, Regina was like, you know, something she's been wanting to change, I think, for a while. And we're like, well, let's go ahead and, and see if we can't get it done this year. So it's really moving just at that entry level, the, to forty hours, to basically two weeks a year is what it is, started off. So, but again, you've got to earn it once you start, but you're accruing at almost twice the rate, more or less, than you were as of right now, as we speak. So that would be a change that would go into the, you know, the, the schedules and the personnel policy.
I have a question. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so right now they get a week, basically forty hours a week, get hired.
They get one point five 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 hours per pay period, which is every two weeks.
Okay.
So with this proposal, that would increase to three point one hours every weeks for accrual.
Okay, so they basically.
So it takes a while to even get the week.
Okay, they're, but they can get up to eighty hours a year if they.
At the end of twelve months, they would have accrued eighty hours.
Okay.
Under the new one.
Under new policy.
And a provision we added in with this proposal would be if they leave employment with less than one year of service, they would not receive payout for their accrued vacation. So that's something new as well, but we felt like it would help protect us, so this wouldn't create a burden on the town to pay that out.
Right, because you could come next year and work a year and get two weeks vacation pay if you didn't take it the whole year.
Right, and there was, and I understand there was a protective thing about it, where if they've earned vacation, they should, they should take it. And in most cases, that would be the case, but there's no guarantee on that. I mean, you know, basically, so it's kind of like, well, we're gonna up the increase, but we're also going to, you gotta have a little bit of longevity there before you get to take that benefit with you.
Now, was there any carryover? Or does it have to be used up for vacation?
You can accrue, and at the end of the year, year, anything over two hundred and forty hours would roll into your sick leave balance. So for those that have been here longer, that accrue more, they don't use all their vacation during the year. So we see rollovers frequently at the end of the year, and we don't pay out for sick leave, but it does count for retirement credit when you get ready to retire.
And two hundred and forty hours is a lot of hours.
So if the next year they come up and they need three weeks vacation, they couldn't have brought over a week with them, that's what I'm saying. Only a six, only a six though.
No, you can carry over up to two hundred and forty hours to the new year. So in this scenario, if you didn't use any of your vacation in year one.
Yeah.
You would start year, year two with eighty hours on the already.
Plus the next two.
Plus, plus what you could accrue in.
That you could possibly get that year, so you could potentially get four weeks vacation, you only had been here two years.
You could, if you saved it.
Okay, I'm just saying, you know, basically.
Right, so that's what, six weeks of vacation that you could carry over, but yeah, that would take several years to accrue that. So you would be capped at that, if you kept earning more, you'd just be capped at that, so you'd always have, I mean, six weeks is a lot, but you would always have a few weeks that you, if you're like, I'm just not taking vacation time. You would have a couple there and, so really, as the long-term employee, lots of flexi- flexibility, you know, they won't take that longer vacation or a couple, they, they've got the hours to do, just gotta schedule it.
So I guess you've done the math, so how long does it take them to get a full week? How many pay periods?
Half a year, so thirteen pay periods.
And this is, this is like comparison to other municipalities in the region?
I didn't find anybody else that only had forty hours in year one.
At least more, at least this or matter.
Most, most places have eighty.
Okay.
Yeah, almost all of them.
We want to be in line with the other.
I think a standard in every industry now.
Right.
So that's one, the second one is an increase in tuition assistance, and that amount, which has been on the books for years, again, just an old thing, we're just trying to update it, is one thousand dollars a year to twenty five hundred dollar per fiscal year. Which we, on the research, seemed a lot more common. And again, there are some rules that are tied to this, you know, it's assistance, so, um, um, it's really for the actual class, you know, time and tuition. And the cost of books or gas or things like that, like that, it's really just for the actual, you know, tuition. So we think that'll cover most, and, you know, a lot of these employees are taking, um, there's some, of course, that are live now, a lot of them are online, and they're a little bit more affordable. So, I mean, really, twenty five hundred to spend that in a year and have the time to do it, that's a lot of class you'd be taking. But, you know, we feel like we want our employees to be getting education. Of course, it's gotta be relevant or close to relevant in the sense of like, close to your job, so it's not, you're not taking tennis lessons on the side, and that's gonna help me be a better, you know, water technician, just like, like this is something that's in the field.
That has to be pre-approved.
I know that, because I made the tennis argument, and Regina was like, no.
Right, but somebody could say they went back to work, they could go back to get a nursing degree, won't help us anywhere, right, it might help.
So there's, but there's some, but there are some general things that you can make an argument that maybe it's not as applicable, like leadership and some other things. But we feel like, hey, look, you're taking management leadership, good for most positions in the middle level range, that's gonna be good for, good for your job here with Aberdeen. So, you know, that's what, that's what that one's about in terms of what's there. Um, again, just trying to make it, make it affordable.
And we think it will help us prepare for future opportunities within the town, because we do have a lot of staff members that are there in that middle area where a degree could really benefit them and prepare them for.
That's true.
Future opportunity.
They could get a degree in assistant town manager.
So, let's see, um, yeah, so it looks, um, again, just a date of policies, it's like it's over twenty years old, so, um, again, just trying to update that. And again, budget wise, we usually don't use what budget we've got for that, it's an easy thing to kind of absorb without any trouble at all. Um, the third and last item in the personal side is adjust the longevity pay rate to a more consistent pay rate. So basically, you know, right now, we have, we have this scale that based on your years of service, it's just a flat number. This one, and that's, we could, very few examples of other towns, towns and jurisdictions that did it that way, almost all of them were percentage of salary. So we looked at that, it was very, um, something we could afford and absorb, and it also helped a good bit, um, some of the, the lower end employees, we, we felt, lower pay employees, helped them get a little bit more, um, on the front end. But then also on the other end, for the higher earning employees, we capped it so that there was a limit to what you could get. And when you get that cap, you get to that cap, but it's a healthy cap of five thousand dollars, but it takes a long time to get there. So, but from, you know, three years or less to the top scale of over one years, you get a one to five percent. It was, it made things a little bit more healthy on the longevity side, and I think that's a real, that's a real true benefit. That employees know, they appreciate, and they see. But when we did the research, again, most of these jurisdictions, I can't remember if we found one that was so used a flat rate, I'm sure they're out of there, but in our area, they were on a percentage benefit basis. And we just thought that was just kind of, again, bringing us up to speed. Anything else on that one, Regina?
Well, I would just add, I think we also would see some added benefit there for positions that are much harder to fill. With this new proposal, we would see more benefit there for those positions, we think will help with retention. This will be a really strong goal, I think, for retention purposes, for those of our staff that are there in that fifteen plus range, this will really, really help us tremendously. And I think you can see what the, the added cost would be for us to implement this, and it's very close to the amount of money we're gonna save this year in workers' comp. In fact, it's almost a wash. Because what we were really looking for, you know, initially, we, Butch and I were talking a lot about trying to add another one percent for COLA, but we just found it was just too much money, we just couldn't really fit it into the budget this year. But we found this to be much more affordable, and it's more consistent with what we see other local events doing for longevity.
So those are three items, I think they're all positive, everything from the retention side of it, but also, you know, this will factor into hiring too, when we've got these, have these benefits and we do the math for them. And I think we'll have to do a good job with the board, it's kind enough to approve these changes, we'll have to do a good job with our, you know, our understanding employees, so they understand what, what happened, and they appreciate what that is. But the board will get up pretty quickly, I believe. So if the boards amend aboard of these changes, this would be a resolution, um, action item.
I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty four thirty eleven, excuse me.
Motion, this second, further discussion. I think Paul and Regina laid it out very well for us. If you have any questions, ask, call in favor. You oppose, the motion carries, thank you. That was four, right?
Yes, sir.
So we did three and four. All right, I got a question, we're down to number five, which is other business, which is before the closed session, right?
Right.
Now, I don't want to hold these people up all night, but there are some things we need to talk about in other business.
Yeah, um, you can swap it out.
Well, that means when we got, got through at the closed session, we got to come back in and do other business, it was to wish the board, either do it now or do it after the closed session. Because there are some items we need to talk about in other business, but it's on the, it's on the agenda for right now.
Well, my understanding that we were gonna discuss revamping some of our historic protocols tonight.
There's several things.
Yes, okay.
That's one of them.
And how long will that take? It may take us a while, if we're gonna actually be.
We don't know.
Involved in that, so maybe we should let them go first. I agree, I think we need to do that, switch it around.
All right. If somebody wants to.
So we need to make a motion to amend.
Yeah, just hold item five and then we'll come back to it and go to six.
I make a motion that we hold item five of our agenda, other business, until after item six of closed session.
Second.
Motion, any further discussion? So after this, we will go into closed session, correct? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now.
I make a motion that we postpone open session and go into closed session pursuant general statute one forty three dash three eighteen dot eleven A four to discuss matters related to location or expansion of industry for other business in the areas served by the public body. And for closed session pursuant to North Carolina general statute one forty three dash three eighteen dot eleven A six to discuss personnel.
That was a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, somebody has to.
Got to wait for everybody at least, yeah. You gotta go into closed session, get anybody else.
Get anybody else.
[973.83]
You can leave it up.
Clumsy enough in the waste.
We're under the house. It's pretty good, man. All right, what we are is number five, which is other business. Now, who wants to start? I've got several.
I just got a couple of questions off the manager's report, if that's okay. So I was curious and I was going to ask John, there's a lot of land that's been, is it 211 in Indiana Avenue? Any details?
It's on the corner of 211 and Indiana.
Is that for housing or business?
Multi-purpose.
Multi-purpose?
Because it is a lot that's split by general, commercial and residential. And the initial concept that they're juggling and they're going through several different concepts, but they're looking at anything from a little bit of multifamily to maybe a small grocery store, maybe a gas station.
It's not big enough to be a big development or anything.
No, it's not going to be huge. They talked about doing a plan development and bringing something very unique to Aberdeen and keeping it with the spirit of an actual plan development. The initial sketch plan that I did see was actually very, it was very well received by the planning department. And we would support and bring it to the planning board and board of commissioners if they did.
And one more thing, so I read in your report about a hookah lounge. It's going to be permitted, where is that going to be located?
That would be over close to Planet Fitness in a existing building. They have to still jump through a lot of hurdles and loops.
What does that mean for Aberdeen?
All right, what we are is number five, which is other business. Now, who wants to start? I guess I got several.
I just got a couple of questions off the managers' report, if that's okay. So I was curious and I was gonna ask John, there's a lot of land that's been, is it two eleven in Indiana Avenue?
It's on the corner of two eleven and Indiana.
Is that for housing or business or?
Multipurpose.
Multipurpose.
Because it is a lot that's split by general commercial and residential. And the initial concept that they're juggling and they're going through several different concepts, but they're looking at anything from a little bit of multifamily to maybe small grocery store, maybe gas station.
It's not big enough to be a big development or anything.
No, it's not gonna be huge. They talked about doing a plan development and bringing something very unique to Aberdeen keeping it with the spirit of an actual plan development. The initial sketch plan that I did see was actually very, it was, it was very well received by the planning department. And we would support and bring it to the planning board and board of commissioners if they did. Decide to do the plan development.
And one more thing, so I read in your your report about a hookah lounge. It's gonna be permitted, where is that gonna be located?
That would be over, close to Planet Fitness in a existing building. They have to still jump through a lot of hurdles and.
What does that mean for Aberdeen?
It's a, it's a I don't know, explain it, it's like tobacco. But this.
There's one in southern part.
Non nicotine.
Look at where it says, what are we gonna operate over there?
If you go to the island behind the rec room, that's a hookah lounge.
Yeah. It's very, they're very popular in Europe. And they've started to come into the United States and remember when I was in Germany, they're everywhere. But people go, they typically drink alcohol, what they do is they'll have like Red Bulls or, you know, Cokes or whatever and then.
So it's more of like a leverage.
Social.
It's a smoking lounge.
Okay, it's not necessarily gonna be selling anything that's suggestible. That's what I was thinking. I mean, I did see Alice in Wonderland, you know.
But they also have a, again, they have a lot of issues that they need to deal with and engineer.
Yeah, it has to all be under our EDO to be allowed, of course. That's all I have, Paul.
Let you go. You got anything?
Not really, I wanted to thank everybody for success of our fundraiser. But I was gonna kinda do that last, Philip and actually Brian stayed there all day. And he's not a member, but he was there all day. Paul was there, it was just good to see everybody.
I got this pub food on plates was my job and I wasn't very good at, I'm just saying. Brian and I worked together and we got a little momentum going, but I don't think we hurt anybody.
And I felt good about the commissioners. I had all the commissioners who bought tickets for me, I'll never forget that. I felt so good about that.
What was the final income?
It was about forty-five, forty-five.
Four thousand five hundred dollars. That happened.
And that's, that expenses.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty nice.
And the question was, what is a bog?
Thirteen dollar, two, three hundred and fifty dollar worth of roof.
Yeah. Yeah, the roof on the building's gotta be replaced, so this is gonna help some.
Yeah.
Yeah, about, not about a fourth, a third of what is it, some place from college. But no, that was a great day, it was a lot of people showed up and it answered a lot of people's questions about what was a bog.
Yeah.
Remember that people coming, how many years of what's a bog?
Yep.
It was good.
It was good.
And former president, former mayor, R. Parker. He's got a new title, the bean stirrer.
That is true. He stood there all day stirring them beans.
Great vats of string beans and he stood there all day stirring beans, so he's got a new title. Yeah, that was, it was a great day, it was fun to be out there. You got anything else?
I, well, I, the central finance is doing, we're working on budget, doing budget. And I'm going to send the budget part to you Regina to send out to the commissioners, cause you'll see. See what we're doing, I think it's good for you guys to see what's going on up there, so I'm gonna do that.
Well, thank you for doing that. Anybody else? Anybody? Now, yes. All right, it's on me now. And there's our horse, what is it? Which time? As you saw, Paul had sent out what you thought about what to do with the old Sand Hill Citizen newspapers. And I heard, I heard from the majority. We're at a tipping point over there, they're stored in a closet in the depot. And I've got pictures, so I'm gonna show you the volume. I've been dealing with a lady from archives and history, Sarah Mill, I think that's how you would say her name. And the concept has changed from what we originally thought that she said that her, the archives and history would come to Aberdeen and pick up these bound volumes of the Sand Hill Citizen newspaper, take them to Raleigh and scan them for free, doesn't cost the town a thing. But we, some of us, because of the fact that they were tangible, we said, well, when you get through, we'll just come and bring them back. But that's not how that works. There, there's a contract that has to be signed by, I guess it would be me, as the mayor, that once we give them those bound volumes, get them back. Now, that was the question I asked when Paul sent that out. Sitting where they're sitting and just give it time, there's gonna be nothing, nothing left. Be nothing left of those books because they're deteriorating. Scanning them and putting them on where everybody can get them on their computer is a whole lot better than these things going away. And, but the volume, she said, how many books are there? How many books are there? Pass that around, it's three pages, pass that around. Look at that.
And which newspaper was this?
The Sand Hill Citizen.
Which was what, the original newspaper here?
The Davenport newspaper. I want you to look, I want you to look, I want you to look at this.
Rock and paper, bow and bat, anyway.
I want you to look, look at these pictures that I took.
I thought it was the only one I ever remember, what's reading in history.
Look at, look, look, I want you to look at the volumes of these books. And that closet is slap full of these books of Sand Hill Citizen. And I've, I told her that she wants these pictures, so I'm gonna email them these pictures. And I told them, don't come down here with an SUV. I said, you gonna need a van, a cargo van, because there are book after book after book in these pictures.
Is this a whole newspaper in, in each book?
How many years?
Those are yearbooks. Yearbooks, they could, you count the years in there.
We lost America to all of them.
This is not a newspaper then, this is a yearbook for.
It's the newspaper.
It's the newspaper.
Oh, they found it by year. Oh, okay. I've never seen that before bound, I've seen journals bound, but I've never seen newspapers bound like that.
These are Sand Hill Citizen.
I never have, I worked in law school.
There's, you can get all of them because there's a, there's an old filing cabinet in the closet that needs to be, I'm gonna say thrown away, you can do what you want to with it. But it needs to be, it's an old.
Doors and doors.
There's, there's old doors that go to some building that are stacked up. When these people show up, it's gonna, it's gonna be, I don't know how they're gonna get in to get these things out, it's really embarrassing to look in that closet.
There's no rhyme or reason for the stacking of them, I mean like.
Well, who put them in there?
Nineteen sixty-five, nineteen seventy-three next to each other.
Well, who knows who put them in there? But that goes back, the original publishing of the Sand Hill Citizens was over where Keys Appliance is now. Way back, probably in the forties, thirties or forties. It was published over here on Knight Street where that building has the stone wall on it, right over here. It was there for a while, for a number of years, and then it wound up over here where Twig is, that was the last place it was published. Now, there's a little bit of history about the publisher, it's H. Clifton Blue. If anybody knows who H. Clifton Blue is, if you go up here on US One, a stretch of US Ones named after H. Clifton Blue. He was Speaker of the House of the General Assembly in Raleigh in nineteen sixty-three, three I believe. And he actually ran for Lieutenant Governor and just lost by a small percentage, he almost became Lieutenant Governor from Aberdeen. So we had quite a guy here that lived, that's the reason why they're out there, it's the stretch, about a mile, a little stretch of US One named after him. But he published that, and if you want to see any of the history of anything that happened around here, you go in there and you can find it. I mean, as old news, local newspapers would have, my mother's name was Jeanette, Jeanette Farrell had the Bridge Club at her house and she served. That's what, that would be.
Social section.
That would be in that newspaper, you can find, everybody that got married, all their wedding pictures, you know, the brides pictures are in there. So it's got, it's got the great advertisements, if you go to the pages where the local advertised, like Belt was in downtown Aberdeen, you know, all the car dealerships, the doctor's offices. It's a myriad, myriad of people, if you go and find these old copies, you see what used to be in Aberdeen. But she gave me three dates to come and get them. And the earliest would be June the fourth. I'd just soon have her come on June the fourth and get them, and get them out of there. But what's gonna hap- happen is once they go, they're gone. So we don't get them back in the condition they're in, we're not taking care of them.
Well, they're gonna be placed on microfiche, right?
Uh, scanned for a computer, I'm sure.
I mean, cause somebody might wanna go back and pull it up. And when we get a library, that might be something they would wanna be able to access through our library system.
Well, I'm not sure, we can ask them about that. Now, the pilot, and the pilot scan, and the pilot online now?
It's electronic.
We do have, we publish online and they do have scanned.
I'm talking about the old copy, yeah.
Yeah, through digital and see.
Through joy and see.
Well, I know when I did my family tree, I was able to go pull up all copies of like Richmond County Journal at the library and find events and things, but I don't know that we would have that here, but they would be certainly somebody, somebody doing genealogy would, might wanna go back and look at what was happening during the day or.
Well, if, if archives and history scans these things, they're gonna do something with it so that people can access them.
Right now, we can access them.
You can access them.
True, I just wondered how we'd access them as far as.
Well, it's gotta, it's gotta be online, I mean, why are they doing it?
Well, you can get the specifics, they can, they can send us an email about the specifics on how we can access them after they scan.
This is gonna be a task for them.
It'll take them.
Right, well, that's all I'm saying. If we're letting it go from us, it's gone, but we could still be able to access it at some point if someone wanted to go back and.
Sure, that's the whole point of it, is to try to save it.
Where is this now?
In Raleigh.
They're in the train station. But they're rotting over, you look at the pictures and see they're rotting. There's no, there's no way to preserve them there. And it's, it's a shame because once they're gone, if they rot away, then all that history's gone, every bit of it's gone. So you can go back in there and find a lot of history by looking at these old newspapers, going as far back as they go.
Wait, is this the town's property?
Yes. Yep, it belongs to the town. Now, there was a requirement which I did not know until I got into this. I did not know that newspapers were copyrighted. Did you know that? I did not know newspapers were copyrighted, I thought if you bought a newspaper, you can do anything you want to with it, but you can't. So that was another roadblock. She said, well, we can't take them unless you can eliminate the copyright, who has the copyright? Luckily, there's two heirs to Mr. Blue that are still alive. And I got up with both of them. I said, send me the form to fill out, they're renouncing their copyright. Cause they would be the heirs to Mr. Blue, although the town owns them. And he would, the family was in copyright, and she said, no, you don't need, need a form. Take them a piece of paper and a pen, just have them write their name down and the date, and say like, I renounce my copyright. So I got the two left, the two people that are left that are heirs, so I've got that. We've got to sign a gift to them, it's a form that I guess I'll have to sign. Then we're gifting the newspapers to Archives and History in Raleigh. But once those, and I said, you want me to do those to you, she said, oh, no, no, when we come to get them, you could just hand them to us. So I'm gonna try to shoot for June, June the fourth, if that's, or what day, is it anybody, what day?
We'll definitely have access to the material once they.
Well, that's the whole point of this, if they're not gonna give us access, why are we doing this?
Tuesday.
We need to have access.
Yeah, I mean, that's, newspapers are online everywhere. Now, down where my son is in Little Washington, there are newspapers online, you just, old, old copies, you look up anything. But, yeah, but you look at these pages, that is not the way to preserve anything, if you're looking at these pages right here. So anyway, that's, that's June the fourth, if it's okay, I'm gonna tell her to come on June the fourth if everything works out. And we're gonna need some help over there. Joe, we're gonna need some help over there. That, that, that old filing cabinet, I don't even know where that came from, do you have any idea where that thing came from? Where? Town Hall? Old wooden filing cabinet, nobody wants, who wants that?
They've got the proper property in the wrong.
Yeah, who wants that old filing cabinet?
Don't them?
Yeah, it needs to be, there's, there's doors, you need doors? There's doors in there. I don't know why there's doors in there.
I knew he was gonna do that. But we got them. Yeah, everybody knows I'm looking for an old wood door.
Please can you get those doors? One is another one.
You might, there might be somebody interested in it, if they're actually a store, I was in the brewery, the old buggy, buggy.
Yeah, I saw that.
That was nice when it took the doors on the table, so.
I don't know how old they are, they're just in the way is what they are. They're not opening anything, let's put it that way. I got this today, this is another subject. This is from Mr. Elmer Pearson, this was sent to him, as you know who he is, he's Santa Claus. And he's, he helps with the union station with the model railroads over here. And she, he just got a, this came in today. It says confirmation of change of date of prototype tour twenty twenty-four. It's a convention. And just to paraphrase it, Carolina Pete Monde Division thirteen, Mid Eastern Division, National Model Railroad Association. They want to come on September the twenty-sixth, I think, something like that. They want to come to Aberdeen to see the model railroad in the train station. Now folks, this is a big deal, this is the National Model Railroad Association. And they also want to see the Aberdeen Rockfish Yard over here. And hopefully we get ACW to bring something in for them to see some ACW down here, Aberdeen, Carolina West. But the Pete Monde Junction is expected to draw approximately two hundred and fifty attendees from eight states in the District of Columbia. Now, I don't know how many of them's gonna show up in Aberdeen, but that convention's two hundred and fifty people. So they'll be here, no, I'm sorry, October nineteenth, I told you the wrong day. Saturday morning, October nineteenth, we, some of us need to be out there welcoming these people here. So let's see how that turns out. But I think this is a good advertisement for Aberdeen, they got a convention of people coming in to see not only the railroad, model railroad, they're gonna see the railroads in Aberdeen. So that's another one. Let's see. We're not gonna have time tonight to talk about, we've got to schedule your time to work on the historic commission rules and regulations. As you can see, we had a big article in front of page for about a week or so ago about the building down here on the corner. I'm all in favor of historic districts. I wrote a book about the history of Aberdeen, so I got some, some tie into this. On the other hand, we need to make this where we're not turning people away that won't to come to Aberdeen. Now, things like historic windows, well, that may be in the historic district that have that, but you can buy replica historic windows, you don't have to have wooden sash windows to make this work. Things like that, I'm just throwing things out. If somebody wants to come, that building's been down here on this corner, been sitting there what, twelve, fifteen years, not a thing in it. So somebody shows up, wants to go in, and then the first thing they do is they run into a roadblock, well, you gotta make sure it's historic. Well, when the lady was here, I guess y'all heard the explanation, she's ex, whatever it was. She said, well, it's fifty years, how is a building historic that's fifty years old? Explain that to me.
Compared to the railway building across the track.
Which is a hundred.
Yeah, it looks like a modern building to me.
Yeah.
I mean, comparing the two together.
Yeah, I don't think things from the Happy Days era should be preserved necessarily for historical value, that's just my opinion.
My house is, my house is a brick ranch in Aberdeen, it's not, it's not in the historic district. But I did the calculations, my house was nineteen seventy-two or three, so my house would be historic. It's just a brick ranch house, if it was in the historic district, it would be considered historic. But this, we sit down and pull out all this stuff and see what is required and what the state requires, make this thing work. There's, there's, if you, I counted it up, two, five, six. There's at least six empty buildings in downtown, well, could be empty buildings in downtown Aberdeen. Six, so if this applies to that one building on the corner, it would also apply to the rest of them. We've got more, just about as many buildings in downtown Aberdeen that's not occupied or even used, meaning than we do have, have actual business.
That'd make Davenport Galaxy.
Would be another, yeah, that would make historic. But again, this board needs to take this, in my opinion, take this seriously, we need to make, make this thing work. Instead of, if somebody wanted to come in and spend a whole bunch of money to outfit something downtown and then be turned down because it's not historic.
So do we need to call a special meeting, just?
Whatever y'all wanna do, we need to do something because.
That way, that way we're not tying up our agendas for the meeting.
One of the things I did on Saturday, I met with some of the historical preservation people, they were actually at the. One of the things I did on Saturday, I met with some of the historical preservation people, Carthage, they were actually at the Buggy Festival.
Yeah, yeah.
And I had some conversation with several of them, cause I know some of them. Um, and they're apparently, the rules for Carthage are not the same for the rules for downtown Aberdeen. Because they don't have the same rule where you can't paint a building if it's not been this or that or the other, where they can't do this. And they are renovating a lot of stuff. You know, they had one building that actually was painted and then they had it stripped off and taken back to original brick. They had one building that was treated and you can paint a building that's, that's brick originally, but you have to put some type of a treatment on it. You know, cause I know that's one of the drawbacks from it. So I think we should also look at, what about Pinehurst? What about Carthage? Would we not look at what they're doing also, so that we're not, you know, being targeted as we're the ones that's non-historical? We aren't non-historical. We just are also, uh, pro-community. So, you know, I'm all for looking at, well, how does it differ? Or either we can take the straight North, North Carolina standards and just go for mayor and.
Well, yeah, and I think to the point of what Carthage is doing versus other towns, I mean. Um, and whether it's a special meeting or workshop, whatever, I mean, I think we've got a pretty good pathway from, um, talking to our attorney. Um, about how to do it. So I don't think we're gonna have it all done in one meeting. But I think we can make huge initial steps and then kind of later tweak it, get perfect with the brick treatment and then in that sort of thing. That may not happen on day one, but we can, because as the mayor referenced, you know, we've got. More applicant and others who are just sitting, waiting to come in very near future and we can't, and we could take a year and do this. We can't afford to do that.
No, no, you don't wanna take a year to do that.
But I think we can do fifty, sixty percent of it in about a month. And then the finite details and the guidelines, we can take more time and maybe live and learn a little bit and then. Get that to the final stage. And again, this is really focused on the business side of, of dwellings, not so much the residential, which I think we more or less leave alone or. Make that still in the same process and we can deal with that if that's a problem later. Deal with the business so we can open the doors, make it more effective. And like I said, TC has given a pretty good pathway on how to do that. So if they can do that, then we're kind, we're kind of off and running. We can start, you know, encouraging these businesses to come in, still protect the buildings in a more reasonable manner. Um, and again, we'll probably learn a few things as we go, but the first step is the UDO amendment to the actual HBC chapter section there. And that, we change that to bounce between the planning board and this commission. And then go to, um, um, the actual guidelines and make some of those key changes, which. Again, changes the routing of a business facility, um, to process. From the HBC to the planning staff board and maybe an appeal to the, the Board of Commissioners if needed. Um, and that's, that can be done, I think, pretty quickly and effectively. And then we'll have to work out some details about exactly what we wanna say yes or no to. And that time we're figuring that out, we can just have more staff recommendations and kind of let the planning board make some. This is an issue, issue. This is not an issue. Let's go forward and they can kind of weigh in with a little bit more, um, I don't know, kind of a reasonable business sense of going forward. Um, so again, I mean, I'm, I don't wanna rush it in the sense of, um, like do something too hasty. But on the other hand, I think we kind of know inherently where we think the slowdown or what the hurdles are. And I think we can change those pretty quickly, without upending the, the whole apple card of historic preservation.
You know, it's more expensive to, to try to, uh, with the, the historic building. I mean, that's why I myself have been running around looking for a wooden door because, you know, metal doors, you go down a low metal door. And then, you know, I need a wooden door and everybody has to be a wooden door.
I can trade you some wooden doors tomorrow.
I got one from friends of mine.
A bunch of neighbors, too.
I already got. But I'm just saying that it, it's expensive. It's expensive for, and then if you're a business, you know, you're, you're starting off. And then you've gotta try and make it, even, even sometimes to make it look that way is more expensive. So it's, it's, uh, you know, with the businesses, I do agree that the business and the.
Yeah.
Residents should be, should be, uh, separated.
I don't think anybody can deny that the buildings that we have in place like Woodshop, Workshop Cabin, Masons, the Farrell Building, um, High Octane. Nobody can deny that those are very nice, pleasing, but yet still historical looking, you know? So with the right type of improvements, we can make the town look better.
The oldest.
Not maintain.
The oldest brick building downtown Aberdeen is the Pizza Parlor, the Farrell Building. It's a hundred and twenty-four years old. And it's supposed to be brick. Guess what it is today? It's gray. Somebody painted it. Who painted it? How'd it get painted? Then turn around, this guy down here wants to paint this fifty-year-old building, no, seventy-year-old building, nineteen fifty. And they said, no, you know, it's not historic. I'm going, well, you go up to the other end of the, the block. That one is a hundred and some years, well, seventy-five years older than the one on the other corner. But it got painted. I don't know how that got painted.
So, so it's a barber shop and?
Yeah, how'd it get painted?
All of it, yeah.
Yeah, all of them.
We, we need to make it fit for, for everybody. The three that are across the street where Renee's is, and you know where that is, where.
Oh, yeah.
Those, those, they're gonna, some, some, somewhere along the line, those are gonna come up. And somebody's gonna go in them and they're gonna, they're gonna face the same hurdles unless we make the same work for everybody. So we make, make.
They are painted yellow though.
I was on the board twenty-five years ago when we got rid of that, the local historic preservation commission because of the same thing.
Yeah, yeah, it, it, there is a good thing about history and there's a good thing about preserving history, but you don't wanna run people off either. And I'll tell you one last thing, uh, Betsy Mofield, Mofield, Mrs. Mofield. I would consider her business Aberdeen Dean. If you know Betsy Mofield, she's lived here all of her life, uh, family goes way back, back in Aberdeen. She sat in this chair right here for.
Eight years.
Seven, seven terms.
Okay.
Seven terms as mayor. I remember clearly when they said where they were gonna bring in those wayfarers signs, you know, they've got them around town that says directs you to downtown. To the library, to, you know, there's, 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 uh-uh, no. Here's what she said. They said, well, what do you want to put on these signs out here? Because they direct you to the library, to the downtown, to where. Somebody said, well, uh, we're gonna put on there, uh, an air saying historic district. She said, absolutely not. Do not put historic district on that sign. You know why? If you ride through, what are you seeing that says historic? What, what are you seeing? Storefront. I don't remember George Washington, Washington's in sleeping downtown Aberdeen. There wasn't a civil war battling downtown Aberdeen. But, I mean, you, you can ride through these other towns. I don't know how it says historic district. You ride through and what do you, what do you see? Store, storefronts. So what, what is it that you're supposed to see? And if we had a museum, that's different. But the sign that says Aberdeen Museum, you know, Town Museum, not the bicycle thing.
We do have a train. Depot.
Well, you, what town doesn't have a depot? What town doesn't have a depot? Every town in Moore County was set up on a railroad. If they don't have it now, it's called, it tore it down. Uh, so, I mean, Rocket Hand's got a depot, but it's not on the railroad track. They moved it. So, uh, but anyway, she said, do not put historic district on those signs. And I agreed with her. There's nothing to draw somebody off US One to ride down Main Street to figure out how to get back out on US One. What did they see that was historic? We don't have any historic markers downtown. We don't have anything down there. Now, some of these older towns, they have historic markers on the street, you know, the sidewalk. That sort, that sort of thing. So, uh, but anyway, that was the story on the, the historic part of it. But we do need to get together and decide what we wanna do to preserve our historic district and let these people come in. And, uh, enhance the downtown. Anybody else with anything? I think I've used it my time. So, yes, sir.
I've got some requests, what do you need?
Got two things I want to talk about. Um, next agenda item, we're gonna have a small financing for you guys to approve for ninety-six thousand. We were paid for Fire Department Cavo and the asphalt roller. You guys did reimbursement resolution. Last August, like normal, so that would be reimbursement on certain money we've already spent. Um, and we had five bids that came in. First National Bank came in, the lowest on that one. You, you'll see that by going forward. Next thing is Lumbey River Electric Membership Corporation on the fire tanker. I got a call on Friday and they approved Thursday, the loan committee, a four hundred thousand dollar, three percent loan for fifteen years on Aspartium. Um, so that's, you're gonna see that coming, uh, next two weeks from, oh, tomorrow on the agenda. With that approval is when we close that sometime in mid, mid-June. That's all I wanna tell you guys about. So EMC is good people. They, they work, they work well with you.
Yeah, it's good.
I was, I was under the impression that Philip was gonna pay for that taco out of his pocket.
I did too.
Didn't we talk about that?
Have some more chicken, Bob. Uh, where are we?
More chicken plates.
With the, uh, audit. They should be here two weeks. They told me. Alright, we're looking for all of them. We don't wanna get done again.
Exactly what I've been telling them. I know, I mean, they need them, you know, we got done one time. We don't need to do it again. Right or right?
So in two weeks. Chief, you got anything?
Yes, sir. We're good.
You're good? Okay.
Torch, torch runs next weekend, right?
It is, fourteen, eighteen.
Okay, torch run at Legacy Lakes.
Legacy?
Mm-hmm.
What time?
We're gonna do our briefing.
Are they going through, be through paving soon downtown?
I got a single one done today and then I'll start back from south, from south.
He's gonna start the four-way, four-way stop again down on south, four-way stop.
As soon as they get the.
Oh, that, that's what I thought was setting up for that.
Alright, anybody else? For good of the calls.
Make a motion that we are throwing.
Second?
Yes, the second. Make sure you're doing all your favors.
Alright.
Uh, that motion carries.